Good evening, it's April 12th, 2018. This is the Board of Education meeting in the Hyde Park Central School District. At this time, I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to personnel, tenure discussions, employee contracts, and the superintendent's evaluation.
Some of second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? We're now in executive session. Thanks Steve. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. It was a great night for the high school and for our students. So, excuse our being a little late because we had a very full executive session. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are no agenda modifications. May I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
Some of second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Let me just move down here if I can. Okay, upcoming events, and we have a number of them. Let me just get the...okay. On Wednesday, April 18th, at 6:00 PM is the next DLT meeting. It's at Havlin Middle School. Wednesday, also, April 18th, at 7:00 PM, also at the middle school, is the next Capital Project Community Forum. So if you want to know anything about the Capital Project, you have an opportunity at that forum. Thursday, April 19th, at 7:00, is the String Fling at FDR. Always a good night out with lots of good music from the string sections. So Friday, April 20th...oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes. Also the 19th at 10:00 AM is the Ralph Smith Spring Play, Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs. And I'll just give you a couple of words on that. If you've never been to a Ralph Smith play, they managed to get everybody in the school involved in this, and you will see probably six or seven Snow Whites, so all interchangeable as they go through, so everybody gets a chance. It's really a lot of fun, because you'll see Snow White, and she'll be this tall, and the next time you see her, she'll be this tall, and so it's kind of cool. Let's see, Friday, the 20th, also at 10:00 AM, is another viewing of the Ralph Smith Spring Play. Same day, also at 7:00 PM, they're going to do it again, so you got a lot of opportunity to see this play. And also on Saturday, the 21st, at 2:00 PM, is the, another rendition of the Spring Play from Ralph Smith. Monday, April 23rd, at 7 o'clock, is Meet the Instrument Night here at FDR, and that allows elementary school children to come and talk with high school students who are playing an instrument and getting involved. And it's not really a thing that you come to watch, but I always go, and it's really a lot of fun, just to see how excited the kids get. On Tuesday, I should say it again, Tuesday, not a Thursday, Tuesday, April 24th, will be the next board meeting. We have a requirement each year to have a Bozey's vote on a particular day, and it's always on a Tuesday. So Tuesday, April 24th, 7:00 PM, at the district office, is the next regular meeting of the Board of Education. And that's it. That brings us to Pride and top 20 students.
All right, I don't know before we pull them up, I didn't know if we had any informal before we moved to formal?
Yeah, sure. I don't know which one to use.
How about both?
Okay. So I have a recap of the 2018 winter athletic season and a list of all the state qualifiers. So for gymnastics, Danica Belitho, grade 11, Shannon Kelly, grade 11, Clara Patton, grade 9, and Emma Jaeger, grade 7. Boys swim, Rep. Burns, grade 12, Jackson Morelli, grade 11, Robert Reining, grade 10, Ryan Spear, grade 9, Dan Berger, grade 10. Bowling, Austin Paget, grade 10, Austin Traynor, grade 11, Andrew Temple, grade 9. For the girls, Natalie Calazo, grade 10, and Lindsay Holland, grade 10. And winter track, Liam Farrell, grade 12, Germalee James, grade 12, Wyatt Mathias, grade 12, Tom Midendorf, grade 11, Paul Sanford, grade 11, and Sarah Traynor, grade 10. And we had several winter scholar athlete teams, and to become a scholar athlete team, the team's average GPA for 75% of the roster must be greater than or equal to a 90. So those teams who qualified were boys basketball, girls basketball, girls bowling, cheerleading, boys swimming, gymnastics, boys indoor track, and girls indoor track.
Thank you.
Two more things.
Oh, good.
One, our French students and some of the Spanish students are working very hard for their French play, which will be on April 20th. I don't think the public can attend, but I'm sure some of the members of the board are welcome. And on Friday, April 27th, Mr. President will be happening, and I'm slightly biased because I'm hosting, but it's going to be awesome, so everyone should come out. That's all.
Thanks Leah. Also, I'd just like to recognize that Brian Howling was recognized by the Dutchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce as one of the recipients for the 40 Under 40 Movers and Shakers Award. Really well deserved. We nominated him as a school district. The competition was pretty stiff. He was selected as one of the 40 out of 100 applicants, and I think it was the, pretty very soon afterward, there was some nice publicity in the Poughkeepsie Journal for his youth running program that he started here in Hyde Park. And part of the application process is, you can't just be a great teacher in a particular high school. Your reach has to extend to the county and the community, and the youth running program for our elementary students, which I know some of the students in this room volunteer for as well, certainly was one piece of what pushed his application. So congratulations to Brian. I know Doug and Aviva and I had the opportunity to go to the ceremony.
It was impressive.
Very impressive. I'd also like to acknowledge a letter that I got, speaking of the Spring Fling. I got a letter from the Dutchess County Music Educators, and it was addressed to me, and we'll share it with Kate Rymph. Basically, they wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank. Catherine Rymph has shown her dedication and commitment to fellow educators and students by receiving and serving as our chairperson for the orchestra in our junior high school all-county music festival. The willingness of Catherine Rymph to go beyond daily expectations in order to provide our children with this opportunity is greatly appreciated. So we extend our congratulations and thanks to Kate Rymph for providing this for the, all of the students in Dutchess County. At this time, we're ready for the formal part of our pride. We'll go up to the podium for this. FDR High School has a long tradition of honoring and recognizing the top 20 students. We're very proud of these students and their excellent accomplishments in the academic arena for FDR High School. Today, we're recognizing their academic accomplishments, but we are well aware that for every one of these 20 students, their accomplishments far exceed the academic arena. But tonight is to recognize their academic achievement. And they're...you want to say a few? Yeah, come on.
I mean, it's not that easy. You kids know that keeping your grades up for four years is hard. It's hard, so you should be very proud. And don't forget to put it on your college applications, and, you know, it's really good. But congratulations.
Scholarship applications. Want to go reverse order? We're going to go reverse order. Are you actually inside there? You can put the plaques down if you want. You want to put the plaques down? Amber Lynn Eichler. And we're going to ask that you come up and stay here. This is an exciting time for the top 20. There's this, there's the dinner, there's just lots of opportunities to celebrate you. Abby Cummings. I see Abby's mom, but Abby is, must be busy elsewhere. Hannah Apuzo. Bafa Ahmed. This actually happens each year. Our students are involved in so many things, and if you drove onto the school grounds, you see that all of our fields are very busy. So our students could be in theaters, in classrooms, on the field, so if they're not here, it's because they're incredibly busy. Natalie Boucher. Sorry, I'm not getting to shake hands tonight. We're in the reverse order, it's okay. Wyatt Mathias. Naveen Chowdhury. Christopher Young. Amber Deal. From the swim death. Ann Dolan. Logan Ritter. And as you know, these top 20 will also sit on the platform stage at graduation with us. Natalie Habeya. Little bit, little bit, sorry. This is my practice, so I'll get them all pronounced right for graduation. Lexus Patterson. Joshua Gross. Dylan Davies. Sidney Tomaski. Alexis Green. Melanie Bowe. And now, a very time-honored tradition throughout almost all high schools in the country, our salutatorian Natalie Malloy.
Got a long walk.
And the valedictorian for the class of 2018, our very own student board member, Leah Straight. We will pause for a moment. If someone wants to get a picture of the 20, if you could squish...
Squish together. Make the rose.
Guys, are we like, open, like, super smiling?
Sit here and be normal.
We like do it like a pan, like it look that direction.
So we're not only very proud of our students, we're extremely proud of these students. Not only the academics, but they walk the walk of high ethical behavior, commitment, leaders, you name it. They are our pride and joy in the school district, but we also know it doesn't happen with great parents. So we would like to thank you for shaping and molding and providing us with wonderful students to work with over the years. So thank you very much, and let's give these students one more round of applause. And please, APs are coming up. Don't feel the need to stay. We've had the formal pride, so they're not inside that dorm room yet, so things happen yet. They definitely do what you need to do tonight. Except for Leah. Yeah, I know, it means we're there, right?
Yeah, go. Not you Mike, you got to stay.
Yeah. So it's like this kickoff of graduation season.
Another busy season.
Yes.
Okay, there appears to be lots of room down in the front, if you want. Anybody wants to...and cushion seats too.
Hey Doug, just before we move on, just from a sense of pride, I think we've got just some fantastic artwork over here that, you know, and I know that when we go to all the school buildings, there's great artwork. This is just really, I think that the artwork that's displayed here is, it's pretty captivating. Great job.
Okay. All right, before we continue, can I put a plug in for anybody who wants to run for the board?
Yeah, go closer to the mic Doug, you're open.
Okay, okay. I was purposely back here, so I was talking to you. All right. I would like to encourage anybody in the audience, or anybody in the audience who knows, anybody that would like to run for the school board. We will have one open seat, so if you get your paperwork in and on the ballot, you got a good shot at becoming a board member, if you're that, if you're interested at all. So, it's not a whole lot of time. They have to be in by the 16th, right? Which is Monday. If anybody is really interested and wants help, I will help them. Because we really would like to have somebody who really wants to be on the board step up. So if that's something you think you want to do, if you'd like to talk to me after the meeting, I can give you a heads up on what it means to be a board member and what kind of work you have to put in. It's rewarding work. It can be difficult work, but it also can be very rewarding, so...or if you're a former board member and want to come back onto the...oh, sorry. All right, thank you, that's my plug. So we have, next is superintendent's report?
Yeah, I would just like to say that with the UPK program that for the past four years has been housed at Hyde Park Elementary as well as at St. Peter's, we were under the impression that the Abilities First program would no longer continue. I would like to say that I met with Jeff Fox this week, and as we peeled back the layers of the onion and reexamined the intent of the grant, the finances of the grant, and then we went back to the drawing board and looked at the transportation cost, which was basically getting in the way of the program continuing at Hyde Park Elementary with Abilities First. We were able to resolve that, and we will be working tomorrow morning with Jeff Fox and Abilities First. The program will remain intact as it has been for the past four years. So tomorrow, we'll be making phone calls, we'll be talking to, I've been talking to Jeff Fox, but we will make it official tomorrow and notify both sites, that both sites will still continue as it did this year. So we were very happy that we could resolve the issue, that we could go back to the drawing board and examine the finances. We will be able to operate within the funding of the grant and continue with both agencies at both sites, so a little piece of good news.
Is that it?
Yep.
Mr. Partey, you're on. We'll have the FDR High School report.
Folks, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. We're really excited that you could be here and join us. You know, we're very excited what we've been doing throughout this year. It's been a long time since we were here before. I think we were in December, so there's lots happened here since December of last year. Prior to you coming into the room, we were very fortunate, you mentioned Mrs. Rymph. But prior to coming into the room, Miss Rymph and a number of our students were performing in the back with a string ensemble, and it was really nice for our parents, and I'd like to mention those individuals. We had Caroline Ryan, who is attending Ithaca College, which is an outstanding academic institution, which I'm incredibly proud of. Shannon Martin-Gnoffo was here, Asasia Walker, Michael Cake, let's see, Mackay Noble joined us, Katrina Brainard, Brandon Joy, who's going to be going to the Crane School of Music, and he will be pursuing music education. We have two students that are going to, that's Caroline and Brandon, that will be pursuing music education. Natalia Allen and Lily Alguizin and Anna Roberts all came out tonight to make sure that these folks had some music, and it was, it's a great honor for us to have them performing for them, so we appreciate that very, very much. We get to this thing. We know our district mission, we know our building mission, our goal, we continue to not want to take our eye off the goal. And the goal for this building continues to be to graduate more students. Everything that we're applying, you know, our mindset, our thought process, all those things go towards that goal. And with that in mind, people have been working very, very hard. I continue to be honored to be the principal of this building. The reason I'm honored is because of all the ways that our kids distinguish ourselves, and also because of the way that our staff works very, very hard. I'm incredibly fortunate to be the head of an administrative team of very talented and dedicated professionals. Mr. Ruela, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Cowan. Each of these individuals certainly guide our staff, they guide our students, they push me to think, they push me to think outside the box, and they support everything that you folks are doing. So I thank them, which I'm being told it's Assistant Principals Week, which, when I was an assistant principal, we never had an Assistant Principals Week. So I don't think we need one now, but no, no, they deserve it. They absolutely deserve it. So on behalf of all of our staff, our administration, and our outstanding students, thank you for joining us here. As you look around, a lot of what I wanted to say tonight has been stolen by many of you folks, whether it be Leah with the pride, whether it be the outstanding artwork that you see, whether it be the outstanding music performances that you hear, whether it be the outstanding academics that our students are achieving. All of those things are things that I'm incredibly proud of, and I think this community should be as well. When you walked into this building, Greer mentioned it as well, or Dr. Reichek mentioned it, FDR serves as a community center. That's what we want it to be, community outreach. There was a lacrosse game out on the field today. There's a teen driving exposition going on. There was a softball game today, of which we won. There was a baseball game today, of which we won. There's a board meeting tonight. This building houses so many things, and for us to have an opportunity to move this building into a modern, outstanding science facility, it's a great, it would be a tremendous opportunity for this community, because all of our community benefits from this building all of the time. And for this to continue to be the flagship and continue to turn out such outstanding students, it would be excellent if we could make that jump. So I hope that we'll all give that a lot of thought. We look at data, you know we look at data. I spoke to the board earlier in the year about looking at data. I'm pretty excited about this data. I'm going to take you through these two slides. I want to explain these two slides so that we all understand what they mean. Roughly, these two slides indicate there's five Regents exams that our students need to take and need to pass to graduate from high school. We talk about two-year math, and we talk about global. The reason you're going to see two-year math and two-year science is because students, all students, don't take a specific Regents exam in ninth grade. Some do, some do not. Some take it in their sophomore year. When we talk about graduation, I don't want us to talk about graduation for a gen ed population or a regular student. We educate every student that walks in our doors. We educate every student that walks in our doors. That's our mission, not a select group. So when you look at the numbers that you're going to see with a gen ed population and an all-students population, you're looking at everyone that takes and passes that exam, not gets a graduatable score. Gets a passing score. And that's very important. So whether we're designated for a student with disabilities, we're designated as a student with an economic disability, or an economic, excuse me, social or economic adversity, all of our students are going to be recognized in this, in this group. So I'm going to show you in two-year math, in the two-year math, those students entered in the year 2013, so they're counted in the 2013 cohort. In two years, 84% of them got their graduation or their primary graduation requirement. We took a little drop at 83 and then we went up significantly to 88%. Those students, the students that go up to 88% are going to graduate in the 18, 19 year. So that means that if we're looking to graduate more of our students, 88% of our students have met the graduation, the minimal graduation requirement. That's a great jump for us. Remember, it was a big move for this school to go 80% graduation rate. We did that three years ago. We improved upon that with another year of 80-plus graduation rate and then we improved upon that with another year of 80% graduation rate. So that was three great years of 80-plus graduation. Now we start to see, as we look down to our students, we look into the global group. The global is a two-year exam as well. In 2013, the group that entered in 2013, the year they took it, 14, 15, 64% passed. You see a marked increase over three years from 64% to 77%. Again, you see the gen ed numbers staying sturdy, but for all of our students to graduate, to raise that number, our goal is to see 100% of our kids graduate. That's our goal. Two-year science, 78%, 83%, 85%. US history, 72, 74, 76, consistent growth. ELA, 80%, 80%, 84%. So you're seeing across the board, the five major exams that our kids need to take and pass, all of our students, our group of students, all of them are moving in that direction. Yes, we still have safety net, we still have the opportunities for state safety nets. They're still there, but that's passing the test. We're excited about those numbers. Our academic supports, still doing a lot of things. We're still working on a lot of things. We continue to look at our at-risk students. We had an at-risk meeting today. We're thinking outside the box on how do we get a student that might have school anxiety? How do we get them to come in? What do we need to do? How can we phase them back in? What are the things that we can reach out to all of our students? We don't want to leave them out there. It's not okay. We need to think outside the box and these folks, as well as our guidance staff, as well as our teachers are thinking hard about that. Our AIS, Ediscere, Ediscere is incorrect. That should say Ingenuity and I made that mistake. Credit recovery and extra student support, we continue to do that. Critical thinking and writing. The more we do, the more we write, the more we show what we know and what we don't know. And equally important, folks, to show what we don't know. Because we can't fix what we don't know we don't know. Okay? So the writing piece, I can't stress that enough. Regents prep, we're going to have a Regents, they're redoing the global Regents. So we're going to start Regents prep relatively soon. We need to start Regents prep because there's going to be an early Regents exam on June 5th, which is out of the normal Regents calendar, so we want to start Regents prep sooner. Summer school continues to be targeted at our at-risk students. And is a tremendous, tremendous thing that you folks provide for us and we greatly appreciate that you do that. You support us in so many different ways. We're very fortunate as a, as a district to have the support that we get from the board. AP and college courses, I think, I think academic support's come in a lot of different ways. And since 2016, we have added a significant amount of classes for, we have supports for our kids that are, that are at a certain level. We have them at a middle level, we have them at an upper level. And we think, we need to meet everyone. We, you, because of you, we've increased our slots to Bosse's, our students to have the opportunity to go to CTI, to get to learn a trade, you know, to go to college or learn a trade. Our students at Bosse's, because we have that, that's a tremendous thing. We continue to be in Duchess County, one of the schools that send the most kids for career in tech to Bosse's. And that's something I'm really proud of. But within that, we also see that since 2016, 17, we've added three AP courses in that year. Physics II, Comp Sci and Environmental Science. 16, 17, we added Principles of Engineering, Computer Science I, Computer Science II, which get RIT credit in the engineering. In 17, 18, we added PLTW AP, Computer Science Java and PLTW Digital Electronics. So that's a lot of electronic, a lot of engineering, a lot of math, a lot of science and all college-level courses that we've added for our students to challenge themselves at the highest level. We have a tremendous opportunity for our students to get a lot of college credit before they graduate from here. And I think that tells our kids that we care about them and we're looking forward to trying to help them across the board. I also think it's interesting that we've, we continue to have the great representation. Annie Davison was just recognized by Bosse's in the Region Four of Bosse's in the state as the Vice President of the Region. So I think that that's a real credit to her and what we do at Bosse's and seeing us be successful across the board. I love that we're doing the four Cs. It falls into what we want to do with writing, it falls in what we want to do with Avid collaboration. Everyone has to collaborate, whether we're collaborating in whatever we do, jobs, working together in every phase of the world, living together, we have to collaborate. Creativity and communications. We're really, you're going to, when you walk into our classrooms, the first thing that you're going to see, and you see it down below, the date, the standard, the objective, the opening, that's our first opportunity into critical thinking. We use it in some instances, we can use it better. It charts a course and it navigates our students' learning, but for teachers that grab that right at the beginning and start to say, okay, why are we using that standard? It tells, it creates relevance for our students. Why are we, why is that our objective? How do you think that we're going to get there? Why do you think that we're going to do that? Why am I teaching you this is what it comes out to being? And that's a tremendous opportunity. And again, when we ask students to do that, I think it's important. You look behind you, you see the things with Avid. Avid, you know, advancement via individual determination. It's a system of best practices. It's a system of best practices that says, how do you, we have an Avid program that where a ninth-grade group, a 10th-grade group, 11th-grade group, 12th-grade group of students come through the building and they participate in the Avid elective. It's a great program. It encourages students that might have a disadvantage to be successful and then to go on to college. It helps them to get the skills that they need and the supports that they need. We've been incredibly successful with that program, with kids getting a significant amount of scholarship aid and getting, and getting into a number of colleges. It's a great program, but it doesn't stop as an elective. The strength of Avid in my mind is what we do in our classrooms. We try to teach all of our teachers Avid principles. So when you walk into a room, and I was in Leah's classroom the other day, Socratic Seminar, Socratic Seminar. She was engaged in this deep thinking in this classroom. It's a college-credit course. That came from Avid. That was an Avid principle. That was an Avid best practice that we took from a ninth-grade Avid class and we said, we're going to put that in a 12th-grade Duchess Community College English class. Those kids had to stretch their thinking in that and they were pushed. When we take those skills, we did a, we did a professional development with collaboration. Collaboration, what is sitting, sitting in a classroom where we're collaborating with each other. When we're sitting in a, in a classroom collaborating, I'm getting your perspective, your perspective, your perspective and your perspective. Those perspectives make, you may come from entirely different backgrounds. So how you view what we're learning is going to broaden my thought process. That's an Avid process. We taught our teachers, we took them, we gave them Four Corners, we gave them Carousel, we gave them World Cafe, we gave them Give One, Get One, Jigsaw, all different techniques that come directly from Avid so our teachers can put those in place in a classroom. Avid. There's 76 schools in Duchess, Putnam and Ulster. Excuse me, Duchess, Putnam and Westchester that are high schools, public high schools. There's 76. We just learned the other day that there's 34 schools in the states of Pennsylvania, New York, Connecticut, Delaware and Massachusetts. 34 in all those states that are considered to be so strong that they should be Avid showcase schools. FD Roosevelt's one of those programs. FD Roosevelt is going to be visited next week by Arlington? Two weeks. Arlington's going to come to FD Roosevelt to see how we do Avid. We've been visited by other schools, we will continue to be visited by other schools. Next year, we will be open as a showcase school. It's because of these little things that we're doing, we're making strides and moving in the right direction. There's a lot of good stuff up there. I know I've already spoken too much. There's great food over there. I am fortunate to have a phenomenal PTSA. Without question. I am fortunate to have a phenomenal PTSA. They push my thinking, they give me input, we work together and as a result, our kids benefit. We have outstanding music parents, we have outstanding theater parents. We talked about Brian Holling already. Amy Martin, if you remember, Q92 Teacher of the Month. We have College Information Night. We've partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to have a Career Fair here at the beginning of the year. College and career readiness. Our students need to come in, they need to start to understand what's involved in a job. They also need to understand how to get a job and start interviewing. That gave us that. We had, I think, 50 different organizations come in to meet with our students. FAFSA, again, we continue to get, the Marist comes in and supports us. Sources of Strength, the National Park Service has got, come in and worked with us on programs. Officer Monaco with Hyde Park Police continues to be an outstanding, outstanding resource for us. Our musical, our musical students, our choir, all of our performing arts people do a great job performing locally, whether it be at the Grand, at Chamber of Commerce, all over, whether it be in the summer, the parks, music in the parks, all of those things. We're so fortunate to have great people there. The Mock DWI, Cape is down the hallway right now working and works with our people. We had the Jeff Yalden. Jeff Yalden was considered the number one speaker in the country and spoke to our students earlier in the year. Our alums come back and talk to our students. The food drives, the clothing drives, the Giving Tree where we give to families in need around the holidays. We all need to have blood at some point, so it's always a good thing that Varsity Club does that. And you go down that list of things. We also, the other day, partnered with a national organization to have the College and Career Fair. Excuse me, the College Fair. We brought in, I think, 30, it's our first time out, is our first opportunity, but 30 high schools, excuse me, 30 colleges came and were with us. An organization came in and ran it for us. Our 10th graders and our 11th graders participated in that. But we also had Red Hook in Millbrook and Spack and Kill was supposed to come, but a snow day kicked them out. So we would, again, it's another way that we're showcasing ourselves to get schools in, into the area. It brings them in and it showcases what we have to offer. I also think it's really important that, that's a, that's a huge curriculum piece for us. 90% or roughly 90% of our students take the Regents in 11th grade during January. We get that exam in as soon as we possibly can. Our kids take it, they pass it, they get that graduation requirement and then these 11th grade students are focused through our curriculum in English, our ELA curriculum, on college and career. We are having a college fair, student-run. They're picking their own colleges. They're creating their own college presentation and that'll be run in our library later on this month for this whole, for our school. So it's a way our kids are getting involved, they're critically thinking and they're thinking about their future. Because when you can get kids thinking about their future, then that creates relevance in education. Sign on the door, you walk in, excellence continues. FDR tradition of excellence continues. I came in here three years ago and I talked about us winning a conference championship and I talked about us doing, having some success across the board. Our kids have crushed it. They have crushed it. We talked about how many kids went to the States. We used to have one. We used to have one. You created a phenomenal facility for our students to come in and participate. They use that facility. You updated the gym, our students use that facility. I don't want to go through all of those things, but when you consider that we had a student today, she was here, performed at Carnegie Hall. Rhett Burns won the head of the Charles Regatta. The biggest regatta in the world. He won it. He didn't just do well. Tad O'Halloran, what an awesome, US Congressional Art winner. Olivia Babcock's been authoring and reoccurring column in the Poughkeepsie Journal. Alexia Sanchez scored a perfect score.
He's really good.
Yeah, they're great articles, right? All right, perfect score, All-State. Our Girls Varsity Crew Team won the Hudson Valley Rowing League Championship for 2017. 15 of 18 teams. We talked about Scholar Athletes before. 15 of 18 teams were recognized by New York State as Scholar Athletes. That's in two seasons. 90 or above, that's an awesome thing. I want to connect back to our top 20 and I left it out, so I feel really awful. That top 20 group was a really special group. Do you realize that that was 20, that 25%, excuse me, 24%? 24% of the students in this upcoming graduation class, 24% had a 90 or above average for four years. That's something to clap about too. 90% average for four years, 24%. That was a great group, but they were involved in a great group. We're very proud of that. That's impressive. Nine teams had athletes in New York State competition. Four Athletes of the Year, not just one, four. Sarah Traynor was an All-American and she was in ninth grade at the time she hit that. She's in 10th grade now. Two-time Section 9 championships. So back-to-back gymnastics and cheerleading, back-to-back. 22 students, I remember when one or two, three students being section champions in the last three years. We had 22 this year. That's remarkable. Nine Regional Scholastic Art Gold Key Winners. When you look around at this art and you mention it and I appreciate it very much. My favorite's the Green Lantern over here. You know, we have a, one of our, our positive behavior interventions is, is Superhero Day and I always take the Green Lantern, so that's why I'm really glad he's right next to that. But our kids have really done a great job. This is sources of strength. You look at those sorts of things, you see those supports there. We were recognized in the Northern Duchess News for our success in that program as well. So that's another community accolade that we received, where we're supporting our students. And this next week, this next, this month is Hope Month and after that, it's Mental Health Month. So we're working with that as well. So we're supporting our students both educationally and emotionally as well. We keep looking, again, 18 Regional Scholastic Art Silver Key Winners. Again, music knocking it out of the park. You look at how much success they've had. Two Coaches of the Year, both Coach Holling, which we mentioned before for the 40, under 40, and Coach Ryan, cross-country. We don't have a pool, but yet we have Coach of the Year, so our swimmers do outstanding. Multiple Poughkeepsie Journal All-Stars, multiple students participating in skills. All right? It's really outstanding. I couldn't be prouder of these students. I really couldn't. They, they, I ask them to give to causes greater than themselves. They do. They do. You know, they come out, they represent and they do the things for our community that our community needs to have done. They're going to put us in a great position. It really is impressive. And they're doing a great job. Can't say enough about them. So thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you to the parents that do so much to get them here and to get us and give us a great group of students to work with. And thank you to an outstanding staff, because I'm really fortunate to have a great group here as well. All right? They really care about our kids and do an outstanding job.
Anybody have any questions for Rick? I'd just like to say, I'm thankful for you.
I'm a lucky man.
These things don't happen from... These things don't happen from... You can put no price on leadership.
Well, it's, thank you.
And you have it.
Well, I don't know, I got great kids, you put me in a great spot, so thank you.
Okay. All right.
Good.
Good?
All right.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, sorry I wore you out.
It's all good news.
That brings us to the budget proposal.
Keep up the enthusiasm.
This is exciting, this budget. Okay, good evening. So this is the final version of our budget. To me, it feels like it's been a long time coming, but when I reflected on it, it's only been three months. It's a long process in that we look at things every week. There's only one small change in the budget tonight from when I presented last, I'll go over that in a little while. But the overall budget number is still the same, it's $95,087,640. That's a 3.66% increase over the current year's budget. The increase amount is 3.3 million. Our proposed tax levy is $60,166,084. That's a 2.53% increase, or 1.4 million. We are within the tax cap. A lot of people can, or think of the tax cap as a 2% cap. When the cap was new, that's what it was referred to. It isn't a 2% cap, there's just one part of the formula that's limited to two. So every year since the tax cap was implemented, we've been either at the cap or below, and it's the same for next year, too. The most significant item in the budget-to-budget comparison is the employee benefits. That's the last row in the expenditure part. The increase is $1.9 million. That's more than half of the total budget-to-budget increase. The reason for the large increase is because of the rising cost for health insurance and for the pension rates. So under revenues, we can see fund balance appropriation of $2 million. Fund balance appropriations are necessary to balance the budget. In every school district budget, the revenues must match the expenses, so whenever the expenditures are greater than revenues, we fill in the gap with fund balance appropriation. So the change from the last meeting is that we have since received our final proposal for state aid. The state passed its budget before the deadline of April 1st. We're going to receive about $213,000 more in foundation aid than what the governor had proposed. I added that to the state aid amount, but to make sure that the budget was in balance, I subtracted it from what we were appropriating from fund balance. So the budget is comprised of three components, program, administrative, and capital. We're required to show the budget broken down in this manner. The program costs include regular and special education, co-curricular activities, athletics, and transportation. Admin costs include the Board of Ed costs, central administration, finance, legal, it's the Human Resources Office. A good benchmark for the maximum admin cost is 10%, but we're below that at 9.13%. And then the capital portion of the budget includes facilities, operations, and maintenance, debt service, and any capital outlay projects. So this table just shows the detail of the component budget. It shows the program admin capital breakdown for each budget area, for each expense area. In New York State, the average school district allocates about 80% for salaries and employee benefits. And for us, you can see from the first row of salaries, the 46.4%, the last row of employee benefits is 31.2%. That adds up to just about 78%, 77.7%. So we're pretty much in line with the rest of the school districts in this state. So the second proposition on the ballot on May 15th is for a capital project. The proposed capital work includes renovations to the pods here at FDR for science labs and general classrooms, mechanical upgrades here, also Havilland Science Classroom upgrades and mechanical renovations, and also mechanical renovations at North Park. So the total cost of the capital project is $26.2 million. We receive building aid of about 61.9%. That total would be $16.2 million. When you net that against the total cost, the local share for the, the local taxpayer share is 9.9 million. However, we do have a capital reserve that the voters approved in prior years. We plan to use $4 million of that to bring the total new cost down to 5.9 million. The aid is given to us, it's spread out over the length of the bond that we have to take out, so we do have to borrow for the 22.2 million, which is the difference between the total cost of the project and the capital reserve that we're using. But each year, as we make debt payments, we'll also receive aid to offset those payments. This chart is actually from our financial advisors' presentation. It shows that for this project, there's two years that will be over the current debt service local share of 1.56 million. This is the, the local share is the amount that's added to the tax levy every year for debt payments. It's the difference between the amount that we pay in debt and what we receive back in aid. So since I've worked here, and before, so it's been since 2012, our local share for debt has always been 1.56 million. So for this project, there'll be two years where we'll go over that amount, and that's for the years 2020 and 2021. And here, we show, we show what the average expected cost is for those two years, 2020 and 2021, for the capital project. A home that, with a star exemption and an average, or an assessed value of $200,000, a taxable assessed value, would pay $16 per year in 2020 and $16 in 2021. So for the other years, the length of the bond, the 15 years, this project doesn't put the debt service over our current local share. The third proposition is the school bus purchases, it's part of our bus replacement plan. The bus garage tracks the costs, so it's associated with every bus, and each year replaces the most costly. It's important for us to have the bus replacement plan, so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have to replace a large percentage of the fleet at one time. For the first time this year, we're moving away from diesel-powered buses by purchasing four gasoline-powered buses. The total cost of all eight buses is $692,386. We can expect to receive state aid of about 60% or $416,000. So the total cost for eight buses is $276,000. Now, New York State does offer rebates under their property tax relief credit to certain homeowners, certain qualified homeowners. In order to receive the credit, a taxpayer must receive a star exemption, earn less than $275,000, and live in a school district that's tax cap compliant. Because the school district is tax cap compliant and will be for next year, any qualified taxpayer in our district will receive the rebate again next year. There's information on this slide, which is in Board Docs, and it'll be on the Business Office website, too. There's a link to the state's website, too, so people could calculate what they could expect to get. I have a few slides about the contingency budget, it's a little different than last year. But if the budget is not approved by the voters, the district will have three choices. We can either put the same or a revised budget back up for vote on June 19th, or we could just, the board could choose to go straight to contingency. So in a contingency budget, the tax levy increase cannot be any greater than the prior year's increase, so it would have to be the same tax levy as we have in 1718. And then we would also have to take out the non-contingent items from the budget, and those add up to $848,304, but the proposed tax levy increase is 1.4 million. This slide just shows everything that would have to be taken out of a contingency budget. Everything that's listed on the left-hand side is considered non-contingent, so we would have to take that out of a budget if we went to the contingency budget. Everything listed on the right-hand side is non-mandated, we don't have to take those out of the budget, but if the board were to feel it was necessary to reduce the budget even more, those are the items that we could look at. I'm not going to read through everything, but the next slide shows what our calculation is specifically for Hyde Park. So here's the contingent budget calculation. Our proposed budget is the $95,087,640. If we were to go to contingency, we would have to take out the non-contingent items, which include salary increases for non-union staff in the, in the amount of $42,659. The total equipment budget would have to come out, that's $711,700. Certain student supplies would have to be removed, that totals $94,038. And we have a $600 transfer to the capital project that would have to be removed. So there's the total for the $848,304. Now normally, at least since I've been around, whenever we calculated the contingent budget, it was enough to get us below the tax levy increase, and we wouldn't have had to consider anything else if we did go to contingency. But in 1819, we have a $638,914 gap in the contingency budget. So because we couldn't increase the taxes more than what we are proposing, which is the $1,487,218, we would also have to fill in that $638,914 gap if we went to contingency. And the board would actually have two choices. You could either have us go back and look at the expense budget and take more out of the expenditures, or appropriate fund balance to fill in the gap. That's not something you have to decide tonight, it's only if we go to contingency. So at the next board meeting, which is Tuesday, April 24th, well, the board will vote on the BOCs budget, that, there's a really short presentation for that. But we have our budget hearing at District Office on May 3rd, that's also the last night for voter registration, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then the school, the school budget vote and the board member election is May 15th.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
So the board is adopting the budget tonight, hopefully, so if you have questions or comments...
If you've got a question, now is the time.
We're increasing the amount we're using out of fund balance, what's our remaining fund balance?
No, we...
Yeah.
Do you mean if we went to contingency?
No, 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 in the regular budget.
No, we actually decreased it a little bit, because we're receiving $213,000 more in, in foundation aid than we thought we were getting.
So the fund balance appropriation was 1.2, it's going to 2.1?
No.
No?
The, the, oh, you, maybe you're looking at the increase from the year before.
In the prior year, I think what he's looking at is in the prior year...
Oh, in the prior year, yes, okay.
The appropriation was 1.2 million, this year, we're using 2.1 million, roughly.
On page three, yeah.
But it would have been more.
So how much is left in the, the fund balance?
We have, well, we have, we have, in total fund balance with our reserves, we have about 15 million, that's with all of the reserves. For the unassigned portion, that's the portion that's limited to 4% of the next year's budget, we, we will have just about two, we will have just over 2 million left after this budget.
And is that good, healthy?
It's, it's under the 4%. We have been over 4% for a very long time, but last year, we moved 5 million into a capital reserve, and that's why it came down under the 4%.
If we exceed 4%, the state frowns upon it.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, we do have, the budget is on year-to-year, usually the fund balance appropriation is a plug, it's to balance the budget.
The irony is, they frown upon it if you have more than 4%, but then if you start reducing to the point where you meet their physical stress factors, then they start frowning upon it for that reason, so...
I heard that they were going to try to mesh how they look at fund balance for the fiscal stress monitoring and the, and their audits when they criticize schools. I haven't seen it yet, though, yeah.
An industry standard for a business is much higher than 4%.
Capital reserves would be much higher than what, than what we have, yeah. And I would just, you know, say that the capital project that's being proposed, you know, as I was sitting here, when, it's probably the most significant academic capital project that this district has done in probably the lifetime of most of us. I mean, I'm just trying to think, you know, what, I mean, it's, you know, it's like building a new school, you know, I don't want to overemphasize it, but I mean, we're talking about the classrooms that are going to be developed in this capital project are significant. It's, it's going to be a game changer for our science program.
Yeah, we do have some boards from The Architect showing the plans, they're in the, in the front lobby, and I think there might be another set in the gym lobby, too.
Yeah.
That actually shows more of the work, what's being done.
Yeah.
Just to reiterate, our hashtag is, our secondary science labs at both Havilland and FDR predate man landing on the moon. A lot has changed. And while our teachers have done a phenomenal job with the science curriculum, they are basically running lab experiments that are not up to any industry standard, and we have a lot of issues with storage and chemical storage and non-functioning sinks and eye washes. This would bring us into full compliance and fully operational science labs.
Wow, that's a long hashtag.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. The hashtag is that our science labs predate man landing on the moon. Stop, stop, stop.
There's a period in there that you didn't get. Science labs, not English.
Oh, go ahead, Denise.
I would just say, I'd like to also point out Slide 6, if you could go back to it. Right, another one?
The numbers here are different, yeah.
That one?
Yeah.
That because of the state aid and because of the money that was, that was put in the capital reserves and that we're able to access, you know, for a $26 million project, we're, we're paying roughly $6 million for it, and I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, we're paying, yeah, the $6 million for a $26 million project.
I just wanted to make one final comment, because sometimes it's a point of confusion in the community, that as of tonight, assuming that when the vote comes up, the Board of Education adopts the budget, which I have no reason to believe they won't, it then becomes the board's budget. Up there is a date for a budget hearing. That is a public hearing of the budget. The time to comment and provide input into the budget are all the months leading up. We have had a presentation from Linda since January, and that's the budget process. The hearing means that that is the one date we're going to call attention to say this before you vote, if you want an opportunity to hear what the budget is, that's where you go, but that is not a time to change the budget. The budget gets adopted by the board tonight. The, the adoption of the budget tonight, by all kinds of legal deadlines, means that the budget just presented, it is what goes on the ballot. It does not change after tonight. Just to be clear. Sometimes people have come in the past to the hearing, even though we have all these meetings prior to, maybe the title of it is misleading.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Okay.
Was there anything else?
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, let me just move down here. Okay, this time, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
Some move, second.
Any discussion on that? Home in favor? Pose? Thank you. If anybody would like to address the board, please come up to the mic and tell us who you are and what you'd like to say. You got any?
Good evening, Steve Hughes, District Resident. I've got a couple of questions. First of all, Mr. Heeter mentioned that there would be one board seat open, I was wondering why it isn't two?
It is now.
Okay.
We have a slide on it.
And secondly, on the previous slide where it showed the capital project expenses, you started with the cost of the project, you subtracted out the taxpayers' share, and a couple of other things, you left with $6 million. I'm not sure what that $6 million is. Who's paying that? Thanks.
Anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Linda, you want to?
Sure. So the $6 million, it's the 5.9 million, is paid through, we have a $22 million bond that's spread out over 17 years, and we'll be receiving state aid on that. So in the end, over those 17 years, the 5.9 million would have been paid by the taxpayers, the school district. So it's our local share of the project, spread out over 17 years.
Okay.
And I would respond to Steve's other point, that there are two openings on the board.
No, they're not.
But, well, there are. I do intend to run. I do intend to run, but it is an opening that I welcome.
I'm sorry. That's not acceptable.
You know, may the best man win. I think Perry might be in for a race.
What's that?
He might be in for a race.
I'd welcome a race. I think that public education needs the input of the community. You know, we need to support the process, and you support it in different ways, and I choose to support it from here, but I'd like to see other people. I'd like to see more people involved in Board of Education. Certainly, you play a role in what you do, and I'm glad you're here, but tell your friends, we need more people to run on the board.
And I would just add to that. I mean, Mike and I are the newest members on the board, and I was very active all through my students', you know, life in the school district, and I was always very busy, and I never felt that I had time for the Board of Ed, and I really never considered it. And it wasn't until, you know, my son was a senior that I was able to get on the board. But I have to say, I'm sorry I didn't do it sooner. I'm sorry I wasn't on the Board of Ed when my kids were younger and involved in school, because it's an interesting perspective to be on both sides. So I would encourage parents who have children in the school district to really consider it and consider, you know, not waiting until they're at a school to join the Board of Ed. Do it now. Be involved now.
Yes, and our valedictorian manages a very aggressive course load, as well as a lot of extracurricular, and still finds time to be a board member.
I have never had homework on a Thursday night. I don't know how it's happened, but that's the only reason that I managed to do this.
Oh, well, that was luck of the draw.
And you think we don't have influence on the board?
And, you know, once you graduate, and are 18, or maybe you're 18 already, you can run for the board as a real board.
Ms. Malin regularly encourages us to run.
Just wants to let you know, just like. Okay, that brings us to board subcommittee reports. Do we have any? I can't recall any in the last week.
The special ed committee met on Tuesday. We discussed where we were with the IEP placements and approvals, and we are on track to get done in July.
Excellent, excellent.
Which makes it nice for me, because I'd hate to see those 100-item agendas come in late. And the second thing, there was a discussion, Jen Cryer, Amy stopped in to discuss, because I've tried to pull the two areas of specialties together, one of which was special ed, and the other one has been the ENL, the English as a New Language, or English New Language Learners. And she was pointing out that we are venturing into a new program, which is very interesting, but basically, we're accepting three students into the program. One's from South Africa, one is going to be from Southeast Asia, and I think the third one's from South America. But these students are coming to our school district with, they're effectively refugees from programs, and they're coming to the school district with no formal education whatsoever. We have sixth graders that have no experience with reading or an alphabet, minimal experience with languages. They can speak their own language. They may have a few words of English. And these are students we're expecting to educate and bring up to a proficiency to be able to be educated in the school district. And from what she's saying, we may be writing our own curriculum for this, because the state has really not provided them with one yet. It's going to be an interesting challenge.
Thank you, Dan.
Last Thursday, we had the Dr. Cunney School Board Association over at the BOSI's facility, and I see some faces out there. The topic of discussion that night was education foundations. It was an opportunity for education foundations from out, throughout the districts, the 13 component districts here in the county, to come and just share some of the things that they're doing. And there's some very active education foundations out there in the county, and, you know, I think we're lucky enough that we're seeing, we've got a rejuvenation of the Hyde Park Education Foundation. They made a presentation, and I think that, you know, as a source of pride, they did a great job for us, and they picked up a little bit, and I think it was a real give-and-take opportunity for everybody, I think, kind of came away with a little nugget of maybe something new that they could use to help improve their districts, so.
Thanks for thinking to invite them, too, Perry.
Yeah, it was a good night. And to that point, I would also, maybe I'm getting a little ahead, but this Saturday is the Spring Expo at BOSI's, of which all of the board members and superintendents and administrators are welcome to attend from 11 to 2, and that will give you an opportunity to see, and Mr. Parry mentioned the CTI program. You know, there'll be tours of the building, food being produced by the culinary students there. It's a good opportunity. If you haven't been to BOSI's facility in a while, it's a good time to go, and I would say.
It's a nice campus.
It's a nice campus, and it's going to get better. They're contemplating a capital project that we should all be supporting, the community should be supporting, and I'm anxious to see it happen. I'm hoping I can get away from what I'm doing on Saturday to get there. If you need me to RSVP for you, let me know, and I would be happy to do that.
Okay. Any other subcommittees? I don't believe so. All right. See if you've snuck anything on board. You didn't? Okay. There is no items on board discussion, so let's move. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I would just like to point out, we have some retirees on the agenda, and some of them have 35, one has 35 years of their service, 31, 30.
Mr. Knox?
Yes, Mr. Knox. So they are on the agenda to accept their retirements tonight, regretfully. We do have a recognition of retirees in June, where we will bring them in and publicly acknowledge them, and we have a little ceremony with cake here. So while they're on the agenda tonight, the ceremony is at the end of the year. There may be some names that come in later, so we're not acknowledging them. The acknowledgement and celebration is later on.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Let me just get down here. May I have a motion for special education placements, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion, Dan?
I've reviewed the packet and recommend its adoption as presented to us.
Thank you. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you very much. May I have a motion for the bid awards for athletic and physical education equipment, please?
So moved, second.
Any questions on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And I have a motion for another bid award for athletic uniforms.
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Have a motion for the, to accept the corrective action plan as recommended by the audit, Internal Audit Committee?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
And here we are. In this golden minute.
That's it. May I have a motion for the proposed 2018-19 budget be adopted?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that one? You had your chance before, but.
It's good.
Okay.
It's good.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, no opposed? No, good. Can I have a motion to accept the school property tax report card?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Can I have a motion for the printing of the poll books for the election?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for the contract for the Auctions International Incorporated. This is the auctioning of excess, we call them excess materials.
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion to allow BOSI's to be the lead agency for the SECRE for their capital project.
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that one?
Yeah, I'm kind of curious why we're voting on this?
Because we're a member, because we're a collective, right?
Yeah, there are different agencies. You have to put it out there and see if anybody else wants to take the lead on this. And the point is, we don't want to take the lead on this. We want to let them.
So we're effectively giving up our claim on that?
Yes.
Basically. Thanks, Steve. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. That brings us to our second public participation. A motion for public participation, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? If anybody would like to address the board, please step up to the mic. Come on down.
Hi, my name is Monica Crowleyus. I'm a neighbor of yours.
Welcome.
This is my first time ever at a Board of Education meeting, and I just wanted to confirm something that I had heard when I first came in here about the UPK's, that they're going to stay as-is. Can I bring that up to you now, or?
Oh, yeah.
You can, but we wait till public participation to respond.
It's over, and then we'll respond.
It's over, and then we respond. It's not a.
You ask a question, somebody else may ask a question, we close public participation, and then we answer the questions. It's not a dialogue.
Oh, okay, so I just asked the question?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, so how am I going to word this? What is the decision about the UPK's? The status of the UPK's at Hyde Park Elementary and St. Peter's School?
Okay. Anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. You want to answer that?
Yeah. We will be announcing tomorrow that the UPK program at Hyde Park Elementary, run by Abilities First, will remain intact next year, so will the St. Peter's program. So there will be no change in our UPK program or providers for next year. Both programs will remain in place and intact.
Okay. Does any board member have any other items that they want to bring up? If not?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that regardless of the threat that Doug made earlier to assist any new board member in coming up to speed, I would like to offer an alternative, and that is that I will no longer be on the board, and I would be willing to tutor any new board member and bring them up to speed. So now you have your choice of two different threats.
There you go. There you go. And we're both friendly, you know, so.
He bites harder.
Both have their shots.
Okay, there's no need for a second exact. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. We're now adjourned. Thank you all for coming.